Good evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the independent city council meeting. It's Tuesday, August 11th at 7:30 in the evening. And let the record show the councilors are all here and happy. Thank you again for coming in doing the work session today.
And Wilson.
Thank you. Yes, we appreciate the pizza so that we can get some work done over dinner. Uh, council members, we have the minutes of July 14th and July 28th in front of you.
Move to approve.
I have a motion, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. And opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Under visitor comments, I have Hayden Rue who is gonna talk to us about disc golf. Good morning and good evening and welcome as a councilor.
So, let me give you...
Oh, yeah.
So, I recently graduated from Western University and while I was there, I got involved with disc golf and I decided that I wanted to put a disc golf course in at River Creek Park. So, over the last few years, I've been working with Sean, everyone, to put in this course. And as of right now, we have finished the 15 hole layout, uh, which is gonna be all that we have on this side. Future plans to maybe run another 15, but that's a ways away. Um, part of this is I'm throwing a tournament and that's what I gave you guys right there. There is a, it's called the Summer Flee and it's hosted by Mechanico. Um, one thing about this tournament is it's all funded through local companies and businesses. Um, Mina actually sponsored the first eight baskets, seven baskets that we put in through the course and now it's called D-Mina Disc Golf Course. Um, after that, we gained more sponsors to finish putting in the rest of the course. Um, some local sponsors that we have are Bike Plus, Mechanico, Mina, City of Independence, Jordan Salazar, which did the design work on the poster, the discs right there that you see, and as well as the key signs, um, for the course. Uh, as well as Capital City Disc Golf, which will be working with the City of Independence in the future to keep the course going, maintaining it, and also making more improvements or adding on to it. Uh, we also have Paula and Ken DeHale, UCBC, and then Town and Country Hardware, as well as Michael. So, for this tournament, if you, could you open up the...
I'm trying. Cool.
Since you're standing there and we're filling it, let's have, I had a chance to play. Um, I have a, for Father's Day, I was given a couple of discs. I have three. We had another one, so my wife and I have played. Not all the holes were terrified of water, blackberries, cars, kids, trees. I'm terrible, but we had a great time. It was actually lots of fun and I just wanted to tell you, we really appreciate the efforts that you and Sean and so many other people put forth to, uh, add our disc golf course to the disc golf courses in the region. But, uh, because it is a really rapidly growing sport, I just wanted to say thank you from all of us for your efforts.
Well, we're waiting. I have something for you.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I've been also subsidizing this event, which we're trying to do on Facebook right now. Thank you very much.
This is Marilyn, uh, wears multiple hats, both as a city councilwoman.
We know each other.
Oh, okay.
I drive some swag for prizes.
Oh, and she also works at Mina, so there's, that's what the connection is. That's why not everybody's getting goodies. They want to be, I think we feel left out. How are we doing over there folks?
We're almost there. I just gotta find the right ones.
Okay, keep talking.
Summer Flee. If you just say it's two words. Um, so I've been publicizing this event through multiple different avenues. One thing I did was I posted the community notes through Mama and Independence labeling, uh, telling, giving some information about the tournament and everything. Um, so this is the event page that I have designed for the tournament. If you, so this is just a little blurred by, but right there, um, it gives a lot of information about the tournament, the buy-in, and everything that's going on. Uh, I also listed our sponsors throughout this page. I've, uh, included pictures and little things about their businesses to attract people. Right now, the tournament has 41 people signed up and I'm expecting at least 20 to 25 more, um, as they sign up. So, this tournament can hold 72 people, so we're gonna probably get around 60, which is really good, uh, for an inaugural tournament. This is the first one we're throwing here, a brand new course. To get that many people to come into town, come see everything, it's really... Um, so, so what you see in the disc is actually what the players will be receiving. It'll, it's a $30 or $40 buy-in depending on what, uh, division you play in and then you actually get a disc. I was able to sponsor enough money to the community that all costs were covered and actually all buy-ins from players are gonna go straight back to the players, um, to reward them.
Great. So, the city will be sharing this on their Facebook page?
Yeah.
Or yeah.
I missed it.
I'll be sharing it.
Good.
So, the tournament is gonna be held this Sunday and I would like to invite all of you guys to come and at least check it out. It will start at 8:00 and it should end around 5:00 PM. Um, there will be rounds from 9:00 to roughly 12:30 and then another round from 2:00 to roughly 4:30. During that time, everyone will be playing. Um, for my last thing that I wanted to do for this project was I will, I'm not actually gonna be playing in the tournament, I'm going to be taking pictures, recording everyone, doing their things, and then producing something at the end just to let people know, hey, this is the event we threw this year. Come back next year, see what else we have. Let's expand on to, maybe a two-day event, get people camping, and just bring even more people to the community.
Great. Questions? Thank you for taking the time to come in. Appreciate it. Looking forward to seeing all the disc golfers this weekend.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Also, I understand Dan Stone from the Bridges Project is, I think you and Kevin are gonna give us a little bit of an update and tell, we're casual, feel free to step up. Good evening, welcome to council.
Hello, Cory. Uh, my name's Dan Stone. My name's Dan Stone from a little bit of community knowledge, wherever in the theater department there. Um, we also, a part of our department is a company called Sanctuary Stage. And what we do is we focus on creating original work based on community and telling the stories of community and micro-communities found within larger communities. Uh, as an example, we just finished one last fall, uh, about veterans suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder. Interviewed probably 80 or so vets from all over Land and County, Alamo, the Corrales, the Holman, all over the place. And from that information, we then create a play based on that information. And we've done this work in Northern California about loggers, and we've done quite a bit of this kind of work. And, uh, John, uh, came to a workshop that we held last spring about this kind of work, this community engagement. He said, "Hey, why don't you come to Independence and make a play about focusing on the Latino community within Independence?" And so that's what we've been doing. So, since around perhaps, uh, December, I've really been putting a lot of work into it. I've been working with Kevin, uh, going to his surround table discussions, uh, every Monday, Friday, every month. Uh, since September, I've been out talking to people, interviewing people, different people in the Latino community, uh, trying to get an idea of what's, what's going on in this particular community. And probably around, uh, March, February, March, we ran into a fantastic group of kids over at Central High School who run the, uh, the multicultural, what is the multicultural leadership, the conference yet? And, uh, fantastic group of kids, wonderful group of kids. Um, they intrigued me because interviewing a number of different people within the community, within the Latino community, the older people, you know, we hear about, you know, the problems with migrant workers, the problems with being illegal in this country, and those sort of issues. But the one thing that stood out in interviewing some of our people was, well, what about our kids? What's going on with our future? What's, what's happening with our youth? And so we decided to focus our play around the youth and this, Latino youth in this community. And so we sort of working in earnest with this group around April and giving them the tools to do lives, their own work, agree the work. And so we've written a play about the youth in this community. Um, it's entitled "Whom Carolled Day in Independence." And so we adapted a Christmas carol after their story. And because, the reason why Christmas carol, uh, so with recessions with these, with these young adults, they catch saying, it's a week one, our audience, whoever it might be, to understand our past, where we come from, our present, what's happening with us now, and our future, where are we going in the future? And so it kept thinking, past, present, future, past. Oh, it's a Christmas carol! And so, we have, so this is a story. The story's about a young girl, Carolina, who's kind of disenfranchised, she's kind of frustrated, and, uh, takes it out of her family. And so, of course, and the play, the play actually takes place, so instead of the night before Christmas, it takes place the night before the community fiesta, which happens at the end of this month. And so it's a lovely play. Kevin is actually in it. He plays one of the ghosts. He plays, uh, so the Christmas Carol, the ghost of Christmas, future, but in our play, he plays the ghost of Carolina's father, who had passed away. And he shows her what her life will end up being if she doesn't change her ways and change her attitude. And, uh, it's a lovely play. It's a great group of people that we're working with, both young adults and older adults. It's fantastic. It's wonderful. It's about this town. It's about, and you, you come see it and you will, we talk about the dances they held at the Elks Lodge. They, you know, they talk about the community. And so you'll recognize, they talk about the labor camps, they talk about, um, the, in the old days, families having, you know, a lot of families living on the banks of the land or riverbed or water, working. And, uh, so it's, it's, it's informative. And the, the thing about this kind of theater, it's, it's meant to inform and entertain. It's not to, that's why initially the project was called Bridges. It's the Bridges Gap of Information, getting to know this, this particular community. And so it's a lot of fun. It's, you're gonna see some good work. It's actually, it's being held at the Elks Lodge now. It was gonna be at Riverfront Park, but we had to move it to the Elks Lodge for a number of different reasons, which is actually kind of good because there's a lot of mention of the Elks Lodge in the play. And, uh, so it's, it's kind of cool.
What are the dates of the play?
August 28th and 29th.
And what time?
7:30.
Great.
And it's pay what you can, so if you can't pay anything, that's perfectly fine.
What's the name of the play again?
Whom Carolled Day in Independence. So, we have a website, SanctuaryStage.com. You can visit our website and there's tons of information on that website. You can actually read a blog. I try to stay sort of current with our blog and you can read our process and what we've been doing. There's lots of photographs, rehearsals, uh, there's Facebook page, a Facebook page, there's a Facebook event page. It's all on our website. So, if you go to SanctuaryStage.com, you'll find all this information.
Great.
So, yeah.
Thanks Dan for coming in. Appreciate it. Uh, they did write, was it a humanities grant?
Yeah, they're a small grant from the Oregon Cultural Trust, uh, to produce this play. Not very much. It covers all of the production costs.
Yeah.
Equipment rental, all that stuff. This is crazy, yeah.
So, thank, thank you for taking the time to come in and share with us and...
There it is.
Oh, man.
Yeah. And so Kevin will be, you could be a star.
He's gonna be a star. Fantastic.
Oh, it's really exciting to, to know that they wrote it. This is the custom written play for our meeting, uh, with local folks who lived in, in it.
Yep.
And so, thank you very much for taking the time to, uh, uh, share with us the city.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
If any questions, please feel free to email me through the website.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else have any public comment?
Two.
Okay, I'm gonna move forward. Um, under mayor report, let me just let you know that I recently attended the Oregon Mayor's Association and heard presentations on, uh, programs, uh, evaluations, economic development. I had the pleasure of presenting some of the awards this year as a past president and moderating the mayor discussion groups from, even for people from all of the state. It's, uh, it's, it's always encouraging. You learn from other cities and, uh, they learn from us. It's, it's a really good thing. And there's some really interesting things that Cottage Grove is doing with their downtown and I'll share with, uh, someday. I have a focus a little bit later, our walk. It's a really interesting, exciting kind of thing. Uh, Mr. City Manager, I think it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor members of council.
Great. Those work very well, Jason. All right, so, uh, it is a busy, busy time. Uh, and I apologize for my less in advance, but there's a lot going on and I'd like to wanna at least get you a little tip of each of those things. So, first off, after quite a lengthy period of time, we have executed the cell tower lease for Verizon. So, they will be making payment shortly, so I suspect that in the very near future, they'll be, it's starting in construction as well. If, uh, if their bids are out or they will be, uh, shortly started... I already started, you know what it's, starting? Oh, so they've ordered bits. So, they are, they are pretty quickly. So, that's the good news with respect to cell service. On the downside, our longstanding cricket agreement is coming to a close. Uh, they will be abandoning in place their equipment, but not without compensation to the city for doing so. We negotiated a separation agreement with them of $15,000 to take their equipment. We'll probably leave it in place and let the next person that has an interest in the town or take it down themselves. But in the meantime, we'll be seeing their services at that location from the next through December and then they'll be, uh, gone from here as well as everywhere else in Oregon. So, there will be all their locations.
Where, where's the cell power gonna be constructed?
For the Verizon, it will be up on the water tower.
Isn't that where the cricket is now?
Yeah, they'll, oh, I don't know if there's a place on that, on that tower.
But they can.
So, you can squeeze these things all over the, you know, the tower. Somewhere in time, we're gonna put, we're likely to put that back into operation, so we'll have to take a look at all that configuration, but a lot of agreements account for that eventuality. So, it's a, it's a good facility for pressurizing our system. Um, so, uh, we're gonna see, you've seen the RFQ schedule on the valley concrete, so I won't go through that again, but say that, that we'll be getting out here in the next few weeks and then we hope to review it, response by sometime short of Thanksgiving. Um, the, let's see, we have, uh, reached terms on the Police Officer Association. That's coming up on the, on the agenda later today, so I'll leave that idle for later conversation. Uh, if you've been out on the valley concrete site, you'll see that they have our contractors and mobilized to that location and begun, uh, removing the asphalt and surveying the site and it started getting ready to bring in the heavy equipment to start degrading of that, of that site. They have until the end of October. We expect that they'll move a little more quickly and hopefully we'll see enough equipment out there to get the man out more quickly than that, but they have, uh, they have through October to do that. Um, let's see, we, uh, okay. Sunset Meadows, that is phase three work is beginning as far as completing the roads and the, and the walks and the gutter and preparing for the, the marketing of 10 more lots at that location. They're looking to move fairly quickly on that project, so hopefully we'll have, they'll be getting out and we'll have some more, you know, space for new homes. There's a, we are running out of lots and so we're looking for the development community to move it along in terms of developing new lots so we can continue to provide capability organs out there, be quick enough to get those permits. So, we're happy to see that. It's been the good news in the development front. Um, we submitted an application to, it's a long shot, so I wouldn't quote it graph, but we submitted an application to get some money to replace the Estuary Bridge. Uh, the deadline was, that was just come and gone and Mike got that in, in a timely way, so hopefully we'll get a, you know, positive view on that, but we're not, frankly, it's a bit of a long shot. Uh, water, we continue, we're reporting to you every week. We continue to apply second carefully. We still think we're fine. We're not, we're not looking to institute a new stage one alert at this point. Uh, you know, we watch it carefully, but the, the cooler weather has been very helpful. So, the demand has gone down on our facilities and we're able to at least this point keep up. We're getting pretty close to normal for this time of year. So, that's, that's real, that's real helpful. Uh, bids have been taken on the West Interceptor sewer pipe replacement project. That's a project that is, uh, that we've been working, uh, has been in the conversation for quite a long time and we've, we're just very able to put enough money in maintenance this year to work on that. That's, those bids will be taken and they're opening next Friday. It was last Friday.
Last Friday.
Last Friday. So, we will be, uh, I don't know if we come to you because it's a smaller project, so it may not have needed to have a council approval. Um, work continue, work is planned on the Bow Lots. We've got a, a pretty good solution that is, should come in less costly than we were concerned about. So, we've commissioned that work to go forward. Don't know yet who's gonna end up paying the bill, but we'll pay at least initially and then if we need to get reimbursed, we'll get reimbursed. But they'll be in the water probably in October when the river's down and that'll be timely at that point. So, that's moving forward. Um, I was a speaker today. I, I forgot that I was on the agenda over in Welch's, Oregon. Uh, so I had to hightend out here this morning. I had to look back. Uh, it was with the Oregon, uh, Pecatown, they were substitution. They had invited us, well, the Sherwood and Sandy is sort of as enemies in a mess, if you will, to, uh, talk about, you know, our municipal systems and give us challenging questions, but not overly tough. They were, uh, they were a polite crowd, even though we were telling them the things that they wanted to hear. And so, but it was, it was good. It was, gave us opportunity to, you know, one, talk about all the things we're doing here and why we do it, uh, you know, and focus on all the other benefits of our, of our, of our telecom system, not just, you know, the, you know, they don't look at the bottom line. That, that's not our only concern and I wanted to share with them what we are doing in terms of how important it is to us for community development, for all the innovative things that we're doing, including, which you'll see later today, about the, you know, the Oregon approach. So, you know, you know, they're wringing their hands a little bit as we're telling them that money isn't everything. I mean, you know, go figure who believes that? But, uh, you know, that said, we still want to get, you know, it's not like we don't want to get brought through, but it's certainly not the only consideration that shared with them. And that we would share with them is all the things that we are doing. We're, we're Independencees. Frankly, how happy we are that we have this unique asset, so. Um, let's see. Another one. Um, if we're pulling the budget, we put in there, uh, one of the things that we're gonna do this year, we had a number of things we're gonna do this year, but one of those things will do a pavement analysis of our existing, all our existing paved, uh, ways. And so that work is about to, under, get, get going. Mike selected an engineer to do that work. They'll be commissioned to go forward here shortly. We'll see those results and then we'll be able to build those into our capital planning in terms of what's, you know, what we can do and when we can do it. Uh, it'll get, it'll also give us a little better sense of magnitude of the problem. Now, we know it's gonna be multiple millions. What we don't know is how many of those multiples and, you know, what those priorities are, so. Um, we'll just have that number, just that information to start with and then we can go from there when we get that information back as to what are our next steps in terms of funding the, the deficit on that. Um, the park, the play, the golf field, excuse me, the sports field, independent sports field, irrigation construction is beginning this week. Uh, we completed our end, the contractor or the developer over there is actually getting his work this week. So, he's, you know, he's moving on that. He's moving on his own projects. He, he still believes we'll be out of there by sometime in October. Our, our own, uh, building department confirms that's a, that is not overly ambitious, that he should, should be able to do that. And frankly, they have been thrilled with all the work that's been happening over there. We've been thrilled with the, the, the collaboration we've had over there and what we've been able to get, you know, out of that project, you know? And so when we see, you'll see three ball fields, they won't be real green, but you'll see three ball fields that are ready to go. We expect to be able to play on them in spring, or at least when it dries up. So, that wets out first. So, anyway, that, that's been frankly, a great project. It's just been a real fella to the camp for all of us here. Um, we are proceeding with the south arterial engineering work. Uh, we have selected a contractor for, we have selected a contractor for that as well. And so Mike has been working with that contractor and we will have, that work's begun. We should have, essentially, 30% design work at the end. We'll have a good idea of, of cost of construction to complete the, the project when it goes up to bid. And so that'll give us at least that information. We have, still haven't defined how to allocate those costs, but at least we'll know what those costs are and what the, you know, what the development schedule should look like to get that work done. And we wanna have that, you know, we wanna have that in place timely with development as it proceeds into the south planning area of the city. So, it's, you know, we need, it's a, it's a bit of a job they act and paying for it's, you know, certainly just possible part of that equation. So, is there... Okay, we're good. Okay. Um, talk about disc golf. We've been invited to an innovation summit on Thursday. Uh, we helped fund that a little bit. And along the second school district, so that's, uh, we continue to work in that arena. We have Spark Fund Training next Monday, Tuesday. That's teachers how to use tech in a classroom. So, that's part of what we're into. We're into all sorts of things, particularly when it comes to tech. And, uh, let's see, Hail was kicking off their innovation at Camp Rezay. Again, something that we joined in on that effort and sponsored by the Technology Association of Oregon, uh, their foundation. Uh, and let's see, a couple of things. There's a flying this Friday, Saturday over at the, at the airpark. Uh, we've organized a garden event, organizing tour to the natural area, the hop yard and winery. So, there's some collective work being done on the airpark with, with folks out there. Uh, Wi-Fi is in at the bike campground, so we've got that down there. It's, is password controlled, but, uh, so we don't want too many people on that. We didn't spend that much money on how much bandwidth we put down there, but it's, it's available, at least to bikers, bikers. And then finally, uh, we had a unique and interesting meeting, at least the chief did with, uh, newest members of the District Attorney's Office. Uh, some, I believe, five FDBAs showed up here. Uh, maybe a history-making event and they, they had a nice conversation about what is going on in terms of, you know, what enforcement was like in various areas and typical areas that were a little, little fuzzy to us before. So, that was great. We were happy to, we're very happy to have that kind of collaboration going on and, you know, it looks like the operating measure is paying off fast. So, that's what I have to say. Questions for the manager? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Ms. Gloria, I think you could, uh, do the next brief report.
It is brief indeed, because I really don't have a whole lot to add to what I submitted to your packets. Just, uh, highlight, we are working towards, uh, closing the vote for the year-end and getting it audited. Audit is scheduled for the second week in September, so everything should be well, um, on its way and, and ready to go to, uh, be presented to the first meeting of December is the plan. Something that, that occurred to me that I could share with you though is, uh, our online bill pay, uh, program that we started, I guess, about almost a year now. I've noticed in the last, uh, two to three months, a very marked decrease in how much mail we handle, or, um, mail receipts in the mail for, especially utilities. Uh, our, our customers are really, really utilizing that, that online, uh, bill pay and it decreases a lot of the, uh, the handling of those payments in the house here. So, that's, uh, really added to the efficiencies and, you know, it, it kind of links in again to the new software package that, um, that you approved a few years ago that we're making final payment on this month. So, I'd like to thank you for, for trusting in that group.
Well, along those lines, are you able to also have the billing online? I mean, instead of receiving it in the mail?
Um, I, you know what I mean? Yes, um, we could, yes. It, we come at a price and I can research that for you and, uh, and show, let you know what, what are options.
Just have my bills now. I just go online and look and there it is and try and, you know, and then I pay it or, or it's already been set up to pay, which is...
Right, right. You should be able to see, have you, have you gone online to do your, to do the online bill pay?
No, because I already just automatically pay it, or you automatically take it online.
Okay.
That's the...
Okay, so you should be able to go online and... Okay, so you should be able to go online and link into that. And you should be able to see how much you owe on a bill. And when, possibly when it's scheduled to, to be drawn from your bank. A lot of that information is there and available for you.
But my question was if you don't, I don't need to receive the.
Right, you don't want a mailed bill.
I don't need it.
Right, right. That, that is another feature that we can look into. We are working on right now, a, it's called Castoff Connect. And it's an upgrade of what, what we, and this was part of what was in the budget. And what it does is it provides a dashboard. And we're going to be doing a lot of our, our timekeeping for internal payroll and, and that sort of thing. It'll be utilized that way. But I believe that we could link in the utility billing that way too for, for paperless billing. So it's something I'll look into.
Great. Additional questions? Thank you for the report, appreciate it. Thank you very much. Let's go into unfinished business. And Karen, I think, since the first item on here is our strategic plan, I think there were some edits that I think you have. Mr. Mayor, you're going to handle it?
You know what, I can do that as well.
Okay.
Let me just go ahead and read those.
Yeah, that, that are, the ads to the, to, to number six, if I think it was.
Yeah, so if you'll look at page fifty-four of your packet. And the only change, I've recorded the changes that we, that we discussed at the support session earlier. And so here's what I have. I think everything as planned is acceptable with the following changes on page fifty-four. So in the first goal statement, on the third line where it is, where you have relations, relationships, it's, exile, you want to put in between Independence and Monmouth, as well as Central School District, and the rest remains the same. So that's the first change that I recorded. Then under six point one point four, after last night, after Western Days and before et cetera, I just inserted Wednesday as another effort that we want the sponsor or provide. And then under six point one point five, exile the south in arterial planning. And just, it would just be in arterial planning. Six point two, and, and we're currently ends with parenthetical all ands. Add in and provide progress date, progress report by calendar year and. And those are the only changes I have. I don't, I don't know if I missed anything or fixed anything.
That's what I had written down also. Council, we've seen this for a while. Does this, uh, sort of strategic plan look okay to you folks?
I'm willing to make a motion.
Please do.
I move approval and adoption of the proposed strategic plan as presented with the modifications as read by the city manager.
Say it, sir.
I have a motion, second. Further discussion? All of their signatures say aye. And opposed, motion carries. Wine consideration for Misty Meadows at the Riverview Market.
I think you have the, all the information with staff. It's more, I think Karen's going to work in this issue. If you have any further questions, would it just a minor adjustment, I believe, to the current issue?
Any questions for staff?
I'll be happy to make a question.
Please do.
I'd like to allow temporary alcohol concession and improvement in part during the Independence Arms Market by Misty Meadows Winery for the months of August and September twenty fifteen in the area designated.
Second. Motion, second discussion. All of their signatures say aye. And opposed, motion carries. Let's go on to new business under ratification, collective bargaining agreement.
One correction to this. Under the fourth bullet point on specifically detective pay. That's not the creation of detective pay, rather that's the increase of detective pay instead of from two percent to three percent. So there, there wasn't existing incentive. So, um, at this point, we have reached, you know, we have reached tentative agreement. All parties have, all parties have signed off on the, on the tentative agreement. We, what we're looking for now is really the approval tender into the actual collective bargaining agreement. These are all the essential terms. There's a number of non-essential terminology, language changes that we made as well. I didn't bring that tonight, but they're nothing of great significance. This is the, really the significant substantive changes to the contract. So I can explain any of these if you like, or I can ask for your, your motion grant for the agreement to allow me to sign it on behalf of the city.
And this is, and the police association is a non-SPRIC organization.
Police association is a non-SPRIC organization, so they have the right to lighten arbitration. Maybe if we don't, if we don't get to, we get to impasse. So we've not, we've not even come close to that yet, in no reason. Everybody's happy. Everybody's happy. This is consistent with where we settled on our other contracts so far. We have one left out state, which is the Tichus contract. But everything else, the non-represented, the off association, and now the association call, all roughly in line with very similar provisions.
And chief, you agree with all this too?
Absolutely.
Chief was part, was part of the bargaining team together with myself and our, and our bargaining representative.
Additional questions? It is an action item.
Well, I move to authorize the city manager to execute the tentative agreement with the essential terms as outlined. In this agenda item summary and as noted by the city count, uh, city manager.
I have a motion, second by four, is there discussion? I would just offer, I know people worked really hard on this. Thank you both for our negotiating team. And also if you would pass back to the members of the police department that we appreciate the collaborative working arrangement.
Well, I think they were very pleased with the outcome as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Here you go, all of their signatures say aye. And opposed, motion carries, thank you. Okay, Ms. Gloria. Mr. Sean, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This, I was trying to just, you know, repeat the staff report too much, but as you know, we've been doing a lot of work in the tech and sort of leveraging might as broad and capacity areas here with the community. Really kind of focused on sort of development of new technologies and how to incorporate these technologies into the community in better, in better ways. We have, as you're, again, as you're aware, we've had a lot of kind of promising meetings and avenues that we've been going down with agricultural technology, education, you know, with local schools and becoming an interesting area as well. We even mentioned the, the Spark Fund training. This is a training that Intel had actually funded for us. They were giving these folks here for a two-day workshop to work with twenty local teachers on essentially how to better incorporate technology into their classrooms. And then this is kind of getting beyond Lego Robotics, which you've probably heard of, a bit more into things like Arduino and Galileo and Raspberry Pi, which are essentially small computers that you plug all kinds of different stuff into to do all kinds of different things. And of course, kids love them. So it's a, it's a really exciting thing. We're getting a lot of, the school district's getting a lot of gear out of it. And, and it's, and essentially no cost to the city. There's a, there's several other avenues that we are kind of pursuing jointly with, with Intel and Technology Association of Oregon and some of the other tech companies. And again, you mentioned the Innovation Academy with Halo. That's another good example of the Technology Association of Oregon Foundation has this Innovation Academy model to try to teach kids both coding, but and sort of in the innovative attitude, the entrepreneurial spirit, so to speak. And Halo took that and is incorporating it into their program. So it's not just high school kids working, but it's our local youth who are out of school and still have various education and employment. So, long story short, I'll tend to be brief. The Technology Association of Oregon fairly recently created Innovate Oregon, which is a movement. And I should say, the Technology Association of Oregon is a trade group for tech companies. Everything from a tech startup all the way up to the Intels and Techtronics. And Innovate Oregon, they recognized a need to expand the innovation economy beyond just Portland. So they're trying to essentially get the rest of the state involved in this idea of innovation entrepreneurship is kind of focused around technology. So on Thursday, they're holding an innovation summit over in, outside of Dayton, where they're getting a bunch of school superintends together to talk about how different districts are being innovative and incorporating innovation into the districts. And they've been particularly interested with us just the way we've taken all of these disparate elements and then aligning them into a sort of a community of innovation. And so they have offered to us to, to name the defense of the first Innovate Oregon city. What they asked was to be, pass a resolution essentially aligning the state's supports and, and we'll look for this concept of innovation in Oregon and continue to do the innovative things that we're doing here as a community. It's, it's kind of a, it's a, in some ways, ceremony of resignation. We don't, we get anything for it, we do get attention, and, and these guys have a lot of, a lot of years of people in a lot of places, and I think it's a good thing to help those people forward where they want to go.
And it's good to be first.
It's always good to be first.
Questions for staff?
So our involvement is, is really promoting them and then having them promote us. And we, we keep churning and they help us promote us.
Exactly, this is kind of a mutually reinforcing situation.
It's good, it's good work. I've worked with some of these folks in variety of different places. And this is a good, another step forward. Can someone make a, a great connection?
I move we approve resolution number fifteen dash one four one seven.
Have a motion?
Second.
This is second by Nancy, is there further discussion? All of their signatures say aye. And opposed, thank you very much. You get to come back up?
So this is just a resolution to amend our, some of our, some of the fees on our fee schedule. This does not contemplate any of the utility fees. You'll be presented with the rate analysis from Ray Bartlett next month. This is just more to get rid of some, some old terminology and, and type actions like making an audio cassette, of which we don't do anymore. And then making, setting some of the fees to be a little more relevant.
Relevant. All the time.
To staff time.
Do folks have questions about this?
Just, just one. I know at the last council meeting, we talked about a fee for the biker boater campground. It's had been included in these.
We have, we have researched that.
Yeah, we, we have a research to have to make.
Most of these are pretty, pretty forward.
I've got one question about the, in a community development building section. I, it says appeal, notice of violation, the two hundred dollar non-refundable.
Why is that non-refundable?
It's on page seventy-five.
Uh, because of staff time involved.
I, I, it seems to me like if we, this is a violation and they can appeal and get a judgment for them, that they shouldn't have to pay. It's just my thought.
Is there?
Do you have any thoughts on that line?
No, but I think the intention was to make it compatible with the community development and these action appeals, which are non-refundable.
Which is the same thing, okay.
I can't see your answer here.
The, I'm page seventy-five in our packet.
Right. I can't see the question.
So it's, it's not at all unusual to establish fees based on the average of what cost it takes to, for staff time involved in a thing that really has been sustained over time. You don't have to justify every hour into the process, as long as you have an average of cost. There's different ways of getting that. Two hundred dollars for an appeal process is not, in my opinion, over the top. Probably reflects an average amount of time, but it's a little bit of a loss. So I think it would yield up.
Additional questions or comments? Are there other comments or questions about the fee scheduling for staff? Okay, thank you very much. There is an opportunity for public comment at this time. Public has anything they'd like to do, comment on the fee scheduling. I see a huge rush to the microphone, so I'm going to close the comment period without objection. Okay, and then this is an action item. Please do.
I'm going to do a resolution number fifteen dash fourteen eighteen, amend the fee schedule for city services.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. During discussion, are we okay? All of their signatures say aye. And opposed, motion carries. Karen, do you want to speak to our next council meeting, please?
We have, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no action items that are scheduled for the August twenty fifth county council meeting. Traditionally, although not every single year, but traditionally, we have canceled this meeting as it is supposed to be at the end of the summer and it's all on vacation. So it is up to the councils.
Does anybody have any objection to canceling the meeting unless there's a burning need? I don't think, I think, I hear objections, it's a little, you get to sleep in?
Yeah, it's an early morning.
Yes, it is. Thanks, Council. Okay, are there, we're going to come back after executive session to deal with some real property transactions. Does anybody have any, what I'm going to do here is go if there's any announcements that we want to make at this point, before we go to executive session, then we'll come back. I want to give, you know, whether there's still a few people in the room. Any general announcements people have to make? Okay, so here's, we'll go to executive session. The Independent City Council will not be in executive session. For purposes of no going to negotiate a real property transaction, the executive session is held pursuant to ORS one nine two six six oh two E, which allows the council to meet executive session from. So the news media, they say, staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session, except, except the stated general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in executive session. At this time, the council will enter the conference room for the duration of the executive session. Once the executive session is returned, will return to open session in the council chambers. I anticipate that there, very well may be action after the executive session. And so we'll be back to do that without objection. We're going to executive session, we're at the conference room. Back in it, from executive session, we have, I'm going to get my piece of paper in front of you. Excuse me, here we go, thank you. We now have a new business, a real property transaction, potential action on Mechanico. Karen, I think you have a motion?
This is, I don't think this will be the form of motion. It's just direction to the city manager.
Okay, can you read with that direct, that direction and make sure that they will all, go ahead, please?
That the council direct the city manager to, that the offer by mapping latest decline and the city manager is authorized to offer counter.
Okay, and that was what we all did, there was consensus on that?
There is.
Okay, so we'll be looking forward to hearing from you. Is there anything else that we need to say? If not, is somebody with.
Move to the chair.
All of their signatures say aye. And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. See you next month.